Okay, welcome to the Corporation of Kerkeland Lake Public Open House Meeting of Council. We will be dealing with the Community Improvement Plan and we'll start with the approval of the agenda.
I have a motion that's moved by Councillor Stacey White, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approves the agenda for the public open house meeting held June 4th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Passed. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted. Reports of municipal officers and communication? Acting CAO? Wolf?
About a year and a half ago, we brought forward to council the idea of a community improvement plan. It was not a new idea, municipality had dealt with it in the past, most recently in 2015, but the council of the date at that point was a little bit concerned with financial considerations as well as others, and they deferred on that. We brought it back in 2017, 2018, and the approach was that it is targeting commercial and industrial. It was brought forward in light of some of the developments we knew were taking place within the mining industry, and that would have implications for Kirkland Lake. Obviously, if the mine isn't improving or expanding, we do want to have companies coming and setting up in KL, not trying to service it from a distant market. We're looking at a number of different considerations, employment created, obviously adding to the tax base, and just simply in a more generic sense, diversifying the economy. What we went through, we received funding from the OMAFRA Rural Economic Development Program as well as FedNOR. We went through a competitive process and JL Richards was selected to provide the plan. They have gone through the process now for a year, this is fairly much the culmination of their efforts. Sarah Verreau is the planner with JL Richards. She will walk us through the presentation of the plan and answer any questions that may come forward. One thing to remember is whatever is recommended, it is council's decision and discretion as to what it wants to do. Because it's on paper, that doesn't mean it's set in stone.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Wolf, and your worship, and members of council. So I'm here today, as mentioned, my name is Sarah Verreau. I'm a planner with JL Richards, and we've been working with the town for the past year or so on the creation of this community improvement plan. So we're here at the end of the process for a public meeting, and it's to hear comments from council and comments from the public on the plan. So I'll just give a brief presentation. So first, going over what a community improvement plan is, and some of the objectives for the plan for the town of Kirkland Lake. We'll walk through the CIP process, the proposed project area and programs contained within the community improvement plan, what this means for finance and administration of the plan for the town, and then the next steps. And I will try to keep it brief, recognizing that this is your opportunity and the public's opportunity as well to speak.
Sarah?
Yes.
Could council members ask questions during, or do you want to wait till the end?
I think perhaps waiting till the end might make us more efficient in terms of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So a community improvement plan is a tool that allows a community to rehabilitate and revitalize certain parts of a municipality. It's enabled under the Planning Act and the Municipal Act, because normally municipalities are prevented from providing incentives, grants, loans, rebates to the private sector. CIP can therefore include those incentives to stimulate private sector development, and it'll set out guidelines for those improvements and what types of programs those might include. And it also requires municipal funding and community buy-in to be successful. So within the town of Kirkland Lake, as Wolf mentioned, the impetus for this was to stimulate commercial and industrial development. So some of the objectives are to create employment opportunities, to bring new development in terms of commercial and industrial development, and also to assist existing businesses within the town. As to prioritize areas for future development, and the CIP can create programs for tax relief, grants, and loans. It will also have a comprehensive implementation and monitoring program, and aligns with the city's existing planning documents. In terms of the process, we started at the end of last year, meeting with staff and having a public open house to gather comments, reviewing the study area, undertook some background work at the beginning of this year, looking at other CIPs too across Northern Ontario, what are some of the trends, prepared the CIP, but the draft programs, brought that to the Economic Development Committee and to a public open house in May, and so we revised that draft plan, and now we're here for the public meeting at council. So in terms of the proposed CIP project areas, one of the things that the town needs to do is delineate, in particular, which areas of the town the CIP will apply to. This map shows the areas overall in the town, and I'll zoom in a little bit on the next slide. And it's applying to specific zones within the town zoning bylaw. So there's several commercial zones that are listed, town center, shopping center, highway commercial, and then several industrial zones listed as well. That's the M1, M2, and MC. And these are generally in the downtown area, along Archer Drive and Highway 66, and then in Swastika as well. So you can see this is zoomed in a little bit to the downtown. The properties which are highlighted in blue are those which would fall under the applicable zones. And this is showing Government West, Government Road West and Archer Drive, and then Swastika, there's a few properties as well. In terms of the proposed programs that are found within the CIP, we're proposing several different types of grants, some opportunities for reductions in municipal fees, and then also what's called an incremental tax grant, which will allow businesses to phase in increases to their assessed value. And I'll just go through each of those briefly. So in terms of the grants, we're proposing a building conversion and expansion grant to increase usable floor area or create a new building altogether, and this would be at a value of $10 per square foot to a maximum of $5,000. The CIP document itself goes through all of the details on these proposed programs in terms of what's eligible, what are some of the additional requirements, and when these rebates or grants would be provided to the applicant. This is just kind of an overview. On this slide, as well as the building renovation and improvement grant, so that would be for existing buildings and structures, to maybe undertake some improvements to increase their long-term viability at staying and becoming or being a successful business within the town. And these are to a variety of improvements, again, that are outlined in the plan, and that would be 50% of eligible costs to a maximum of $5,000. The facade improvement grant, so this is more improving of the aesthetics, the front or corner sides of a building. Typically, we see those often in downtown commercial areas. This would, again, propose to be 50% of eligible costs to a maximum of $5,000. And as well, when undertaking any of these improvements, often a business would need to prepare designs, perhaps architectural drawings, maybe some studies or engineering drawings. And so there is also proposed to be a grant that would assist with preparation of those So another program is the reduction in or rebate of municipal fees. So with improvements to a building or property development, there's often fees that are paid to the municipality for that type of development. Perhaps there's planning application fees, so rezonings, variance, that type of application. And through a CIP, the town is able to rebate or reduce some of those fees. And so we're proposing some reductions to planning application, building permit, signage permit, demolition permit, and landfill fees. And these would all be tied in, though, with an applicable CIP project. So it needs to be something in the commercial industrial areas as set out in the proposed Finally, the last two proposed programs are the sale of land for less than market value. So council is able to set list prices for land, and then also to consider selling them at less than that market value. And the tax increment-based grant, so when someone does an improvement on their property, and one of the goals of the CIP is to see an increase in property assessments, because ultimately the municipality benefits from that. However, sometimes if it's a new business, perhaps the business owner might want to see that phased in to help them get kick-started with their business. So the tax increment-based grant can phase in the increases to their property assessment. So in the first few years, they're paying less of that value, and then in the final year, so in this case, we've proposed it over a four-year term. In the fifth year, that's when they'd be paying the full new assessed value. So as I mentioned, there is program criteria for each of these programs and to be eligible for this CIP overall. These criteria can include being in conformity with municipal plans and bylaws, having taxes paid on the properties are important, a minimum cost to the overall improvement, so that you are seeing the benefits of assisting someone with development as they're going to be undertaking a large project. You can also require entering into a maintenance agreement, so encouraging that someone keeps up with that building improvement, completing the project within a certain timeframe, and facilitating employee retention and expansion. In terms of finance considerations for the municipality, so this is something where, as you've noted through the CIP, some of the programs are grants to private sector development. So that is actually the expending of funds by the municipality to assist businesses. So the municipality would need to consider on an annual basis, how much do you want to set aside to support the CIP? Typically, what we see for a municipality of this size and kind of across Northern Ontario is roughly $50,000 as a kind of a starting point. Of course, you need to weigh that with what the considerations are in your municipality. And then on a year-to-year basis, decide if you have funds left over from the previous year, is that going to increase the overall funds that you have, and you can put it into a reserve. There are also financial limits per property that are proposed, and I believe it's $10,000 per property. So if you had a $50,000 budget and everyone went that full amount, you could perhaps support five properties in the first year of the CIP. There are also financial limits proposed for each incentive, and as well, when someone has a project, perhaps it's a very large project, we're not limiting through the plan of them combining with other grants and opportunities. Certainly, if there's other opportunities for them to receive assistance and really build that project, we want to encourage that. For administration of the CIP, applications would come forward and be reviewed by staff to ensure that they are meeting the criteria that are set out in the plan. They would then be reviewed by the Economic Development Committee for a recommendation, and then brought forward to council for approval. Typically, CIPs apply for a five-year time period, but that can be revised by council or extended, subject to the performance of the CIP. And it's subject to an annual review and reporting, you want to make sure, qualify kind of where you're receiving applications, what kind of projects are being undertaken as a result of the CIP, and be able to quantify the improvements that you're seeing in the town. The town can also revise the programs as set out in the CIP document, so some require amendment to the document, and some revisions do not require a specific amendment to the So in terms of the next steps, and I apologize if I've gone on a little too long, but the purpose of this meeting, again, is to receive comments and questions from council and from the public. Following the meeting, council can then choose to adopt the CIP and the project area bylaw as presented or with revisions, or defer the decision to consider comments and make additional revisions. There is an appeal period for the plan, and then once the plan is adopted and the appeal period has ended, then the town's able to use the plan and start receiving applications and hopefully provide some incentives to local businesses. And that's it, thank you.
Comments and questions from council? Councillor Adams?
Yep, I'm certainly in favor of a community improvement plan. Just a question I'd ask, so you say recommended a $50,000 per year, and that's what other municipalities do, so what would be the return on investment on that? Because it would be based on the assessment as well. So what do other municipalities see as their money coming back to them off of that?
So that's going to be, I think, dependent on the incentives that are being chosen, as well, I think you're going, I don't have a specific dollar value for it, as well, I think you're going to see it in a longer, longer term. So the first few years, typically, it's getting the word out, really promoting and marketing the plan, and then once, once you have that better uptake, you'll be able to see, you might be seeing new, new businesses, which are going to have a different level of return on incentive versus, say, facade improvements. So I don't have a specific dollar value, but I think overall, the goal is to see not only the aesthetic improvements and rejuvenation revitalization to a downtown and a commercial core, as well as the new businesses and the employment opportunities and increased tax assessments.
Yep. And then is it possible to open up the building permit and planning application fee rebate to even residential, to help with aesthetics of?
Yeah, so that's something we had discussed a little bit at the Economic Development Committee, certainly an option. Either it could be kind of added into this current proposed CIP that you have on the table in front of you, or as a, perhaps, an amendment to the CIP later on, or something specific for, for just residential properties in general. Certainly, the gamut, we've kind of described some of the various programs and incentives, it's up to the town to determine where you want to have those applied to, so certainly an option.
And then, so where it comes for funding for the town, though, I think we kind of set up a reserve for this, organization restructuring efficiency, where it was identified that some of that money can be used for that. So certainly wasn't like the pickle like we were at the start, where, yeah, it's great, but we have no money, but now we have that little bit of a cushion to help.
You do have that little bit of a cushion. The other one that was available to the community is Main Street funding. We, during the finance meetings, we had discussed, that's about $48,000 that it should be used to offset the sidewalk development in the downtown, and I've asked roads and procurement to take a look at putting on an RFP for that, because we can't pay ourselves, but that's an option as well. I would be concerned about the timelines on that, because that's a limited-time funding versus the other one, it's in the bank.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I attended two of the open houses, and at the last open house, and I see it was on the slide, it was suggested that we reduce the cost of industrial land by 90%. And if I was a taxpayer, I'd be jumping up and down at this point, but what people have to realize is that we don't sell our land for that much money. I think it's, what is it, Wolf, $15,000 an acre?
The last few sales were in the $7,000 name area because of the value of the investment.
Okay, so 90% of $7,000, it's not a lot of money, but when you come to selling this plan to industry and you're telling them, you're giving them 90% off the cost of their land, that's a huge difference, and will make the plan a lot more saleable to industries outside Kirkland Lake. For years, councils, economic development officers, economic development committees have struggled to attract industry to Kirkland Lake. I think at this point in time, with price of land being so expensive in Southern and Central Ontario, as well as the introduction of computers and the internet, where businesses don't have to be as close to their customers anymore, we have an opportunity here to do something, hopefully, that previous people couldn't do. And to do that, I believe strongly, we have to be competitive, and we have to offer incentives. I have mixed feelings about giving people money to fix up their facades on Government Road. In my heart of hearts, I say, you're in business, you should look after the front of your business. I don't think taxpayers should pay it. But as a councillor, I know when I drive through a town, often that's all I'm doing is driving through, and I judge that town by what their downtown looks like. And right now, I don't think people are getting a really positive reflection of what's happening in Kirkland Lake right now, because their downtown is not necessarily the best kept downtown in terms of the facades of the building. So I think that that also is a good incentive. And down the road, I would like to see residential included, because I know when I was younger and I had a young family, there were lots of things I would have liked to done to my house to make it better, and I couldn't do it because I didn't have the money. And today, we still have a lot of families in town that are struggling, that would like to show the pride of ownership in their property, and they can't do it. So not necessarily in the first year, but down the road, I think we should also look at residential. But I'm 100% behind this plan.
Yeah, Councillor Owen, if I may add to that, and we've had a little discussion on this this afternoon this morning. The ability for the town to adjust the community improvement plan is what you called a, this is a working document or program, that we, once it's initially approved and stamped by the province, we can make additions to the program and adjustments along the way. So it's going to give us a lot of flexibility. I know in speaking with the Economic Development Committee, they're very gung-ho on this program. They feel they need it to go out and knock on doors and get the message out, so I think it's a real positive step for the future, so I fully support it.
Okay, it's open to the floor of the public. If you wish to comment or ask a question, we will try and answer. Please come to the mic and identify yourself. Don't everybody rush. Don't be shy. I think this is a real positive move for the Town of Kirkland Lake. I'm excited about it. I know all the councillors are.
So I have two resolutions. One is moved by Councillor Stacey White, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier, that the acting chief administrative officer bring a bylaw for consideration designating lands within the following zones as a community improvement project area. Town commercial, town center commercial, C1, shopping center commercial, C2, highway commercial, C4, light industrial, M1, heavy industrial, M2, and industrial commercial, MC.
Any further comments? All in favor? Passed?
The second resolution is moved by Councillor Stacey White, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier, that the acting chief administrative officer bring a bylaw for consideration adopting the community improvement plan as presented at the meeting of June 4th, 2019.
All in favor? That's it? We will now adjourn to a regular meeting of council.
It's moved by Councillor Stacey White, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier, that council adjourn its public open house meeting of June 4th, 2019 to a public planning meeting of council.
All in favor? Welcome to the special planning meeting of June the 4th, 2019. Approval of the agenda?
Moved by Councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councillor Stacey White, that council approves the agenda for the special planning meeting held June 4th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Reports of municipal officers and communications? Ashley Billado, manager of planning and land development.
Hello, everybody. If anybody is here specifically for this application, I'll just get you to make sure that you put your name and contact information on the sign-in sheet. So is there anyone else other than the applicants themselves that are here for this application? Oh, okay. All right, I'll get started. So this application is a rezoning application for the property located at 1 Duncan Avenue North. It is an amendment basically to allow residential to occur on the main floor of the building. So as we, that building specifically is a one-story building, and there are a couple of units right now that have, that are residential in nature. The intent is to convert a few more of them while keeping some commercial aspect to the property. So our zoning bylaw right now, the way it's worded, in the downtown commercial zone, you are allowed to have residential, but it's only on the upper stories. And the reason the bylaw is set up that way is because it's more targeting the downtown businesses where there are apartment units on the second floor. And those are things we do want to encourage. When looking over at the provincial policy statement and the official plan, they are consistent with the policies that are presented. It would not eliminate the ability for the owner to convert the building back into commercial use, so there is a requirement in the provincial policy statement and our official plan that comprehensive review would have to happen if we were taking commercial space out of our core and converting it entirely to residential, but because we're keeping that option there for it to be converted back to commercial later, I didn't feel like it was, it was the right way to proceed. The building right now is underused, so it's a matter of finding a use that's suitable for that building and having it operate at 100% capacity versus at maybe 40 or 50 right What else do you need to know? So yeah, the intent is to keep the commercial presence on the property by having their existing tenants, which includes the hair salon, the massage therapist, the professional offices and the takeout restaurant, so all those are going to stay. The one-floor access is a great, a great opportunity for seniors to be able to make use of those, those units. The applicant, yeah, and I've mentioned that they're going to be trying to keep the ability to convert. There's enough parking, there's no worries there. They are planning on putting in an accessible parking space, which was a recommendation that was made by the planning advisory committee. Yeah, other than that, that's essentially all you need to know. We did have the planning advisory committee meeting on May 23rd. We did have the planning advisory committee meeting on May 23rd, and they did recommend that this application be approved with the condition that an accessible parking space be placed on the, by the one property, or by the one building to the north. Are there questions? I do have some pictures as well, if anybody is curious.
Does the applicant wish to make any comments or? Okay. There is a definite shortage of, I assume these are going to be like a one-unit, or one-bedroom unit apartment. There's a definite shortage of housing within the community. It'd be nice to see people in the downtown core. This is, I think, a pretty good opportunity for, for the town and for the applicants for sure. So I would personally support this. Any further comments, councillor Owen?
Yeah, I'm sit on the planning advisory committee, and I certainly see no downside to this, but what I really like to see is local people reinvesting in Kirkland Lake and taking a partially-used building and making it more or less one hundred percent used. And I think that the, the fact that it's local money sits even higher. But I see no downside to this, the parking's there, the space is there, and I think they should be commended for going ahead with this project, so I certainly support it.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion?
So I have a motion that is moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White. The council directs the acting chief administrative officer to bring a bylaw for consideration rezoning land at One Duncan Avenue North to Town Center Commercial Special, C1 Special, for the purpose of permitting residential on the main floor.
All in favor?
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Stacey White, that council adjourn its planning meeting of June 4th, 2019 to a regular meeting of council.
All in favor? We will now go to our regular meeting of council of June the 4th, 2019. Couple of announcements. At its meeting of June the 11th, council will consider a bylaw to sell property located at Seventh Station Road North. Also, I'd just like to mention, on Friday between 12 noon and 2 o'clock, there'll be a celebration of life for our former mayor and councillor, Bill Enoy, open to the public. I'm sure Bill will get a great send-off. With twenty-five years sitting on council, he worked for what was best for the town and certainly paid his dues. So we wish his family, or send our condolences to his family, Linda, Drew, and brother David. And hopefully, we'll have a great turnout Friday. We'll have a moment of silence, maybe we can dedicate this to Bill. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Sorry, Owen. No, Owens, I had it right the first time. The council approves the agenda for the regular meeting of council held June 4th, 2019 as presented.
All in favor? Any declaration of pecuniary interest?
Thank you, your worship, councillors.
Is that turned on, your?
Yes, I turned it on. So from the last time I was here, at the last meeting, I was requested to go back and look over the site plan for the OPP Golden Helmets, which I did. I spoke to the person that was in charge of getting the, them to come, and that was Athena LaCarte, and she contacted them to make sure that we had the correct measurements for what they needed. By, after doing that, I wrote a letter and we drew up a site plan, and we went to see every business owner or manager at the mall, Pure Later Lifestyles, Canadian Tire, Tim Hortons, Canadian Gas Bar, and McDonald's. Those are the businesses that are being affected by us requesting to close the highway from the lights that go into the mall or Yigs to the DVA, the new DVA parking lot. You all have a measurement there, minimum is six hundred and seventy feet. They have a minimum that they're requesting of fifty, they prefer sixty in order to do the performance, four lanes, flat surface. I told everyone my name, my number, my private cell number was on them for them to contact me. I also went and had a meeting with staff Sergeant Dugan, Fire Chief Robidere, and Mr. McCarthy from the ambulance, DSAB. I received a confirmation email, which I sent to Joanne, and I think she forwarded to all the councillors, that they're fine. Staff Sergeant Dugan needed more specifics, I had to give him exactly how many cruisers I needed, where I needed them, and exactly what time I needed them for. So I have not received any, anything different from him. He has four cruisers on that weekend, and two are designated, one for the parade, and then two at each end of the, where the road closure will be, that we're requesting on Government Road. DSAB said that they would make sure they had, according to the email, one at one end of Government Road and one at this end. I also had a comment that the last Golden Helmets performance might have been on Second Street. I do have the newspaper article that was actually written by Mister, by Rick, that the Golden Helmets performance was actually in front of the mall on Government Road. And I do have the newspaper articles for that, if you would like to see it. I think I have done my due diligence, but to make sure, Mike went back, and I'll let Mike speak, as he went, and there was one gentleman that wanted us to re-measure, and I'll let Mike speak to that.
Like Sue said, they require six hundred feet length by sixty feet, which we have. So on this sheet that I've given all the councillors, you can see the measurements. So if you start at Al Wendy, at the lights, you've got two hundred and sixty-five feet to the entrance into McDonald's and Canadian Tire Gas Bar. From there to the next entrance at Tim Hortons, two hundred and twenty-eight feet. From there to the DVA entrance is one seventy-seven, so a total of six hundred and seven feet. The gentleman from the gas bar suggested that we started at his road and go towards Chappy. Well, unfortunately, that's not enough, because that gives us four hundred and five feet to the new DVA. And then it's not the same, the street's not the same width all the way. People, you drive it every day and you think it's four lanes all the way, it's four lanes, but they're not equal four lanes. If you see my measurements, in front of the Tim Hortons, the Canadian Gas Bar, it's sixty-four feet wide. At the six hundred-foot mark between the Tim Hortons, the second Tim Hortons entrance and the old DVA, or new DVA, it's fifty-three feet. Soon as you get past the new DVA, it narrows down to forty-eight feet. So it's not, it's four lanes, but it's not an equal four lane. So if we started where he suggested, we don't have enough room. We've got four hundred and five feet, and all of a sudden it starts to narrow. So you can't have it there. It's, it's just not feasible, so they, they won't hold it performance there. Unfortunate, but that's why I went back and I measured today and did the sketch-up for all the councillors, so they can see exactly why we're, we want to have it, where we want to have it. Possibly another option would be from Main Street to Al Wendy, but then you're blocking all the businesses off. Any questions on the measurements or any?
Mike, just to comment, the gentleman that was concerned about entrance to his business, I did talk to him yesterday. He does understand where you're coming from. He's a good corporate citizen, and he's fine with what you're suggesting here.
Yeah, I spoke to him again today.
Yeah.
And he understands, he doesn't want to upset the apple cart. Personally, I don't think it's going to affect the business. Like, I don't know where people buy their gas, but I, I support Canadian Tire, I have a Canadian Tire points card. So I, if I, I need gas that day and I can't get there, I'll come back later. I don't go to the other ones because I, I collect Canadian Tire points. Other people collect ESO, other people collect Shell points. So I think people are a feature of habit. So if you're going to go there for gas and you can't get there right then and there, you're going to come back.
I agree.
So I also went and spoke to Steve Ranta at the Works Department and asked him what I needed. The staff sergeant Dugan, even though the two cruisers will be there to close off the road, he still recommended that I have barricades put up. He said, you're always going to get someone that's going to try to drive around the cruiser. So we do have volunteers that will be on the barricades for closure there. And he also recommended that I have signs done at each end for road closure with the times, so that we can post them the day of or the day before, so people know that the highway will be closed from eleven-thirty to twelve on that Saturday, the 29th, which I'm getting made as, if I get the okay today. At committee expense.
Councillor Owen.
I'd like to commend you guys, you did your homework, you went to consult the businesses. We, you guys adjusted the plan, and now all businesses have an access. Even the Canadian Tire Gas Bar, even though it's not ideal, you can still access it through, there's a kind of an old laneway or a ramp, you can go through the DVA parking lot. So that's like terrific, and Independence is quite happy with this, because I spoke with them after the meeting, and they were kind of iffy, they, they were trying to convey it's a long weekend. They are busy, so that would have affected them. But you know, what the plan got adjusted, and you're right, that one, that time they were on Government Road, 2005, they were on Second Street. I have got the pictures to prove it, I spoke with one of the reporters that covered it back then, so they were, so they've adjusted or they've, they've changed their, their criterias. But you know what? Just one little question though. So we're blocked off on either end, is there something securing the site, from the sides to stop people from cutting across a motorcycle when it's coming through, or is that just?
So the barricades will be on, on the east and west end of Government Road. Barricades are at the McDonald's Gas Bar entrance, there's a barricade going into Tim Hortons, and there's a barricade across the street, the left-hand side of the mall, that small road.
Okay.
But as I explained to all the business owners at the mall, people can still come in off Main Street, Government Road, and go in to Canadian, Giant Tiger, or around the backside of the mall. The only gentleman that called his head office on, in the mall, was Mr. Louis Gochet, because the bus comes in and leaves, he leaves, the bus leaves at eleven-twenty. So I said we would make sure, and he also called his head office, to make sure that the bus company driver knows that day that he's to come in, load up, and leave by eleven-twenty. And they're the only ones that I have, that I had a concern with.
Even in that case, the bus could probably get around on Archer Drive and just to, like, there is a way in and out, so on that one. But I'm more concerned, like pedestrians crossing off that side, like it's, is there more standards from the OPP that say we have to block the sidewalks so people can't cut across them while they're performing?
No, there was no request for me to do that, no.
Okay. I'm fine with this.
There's quite a few of the bikes in the performance, so if somebody thinks they're going to be able to get through.
Councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, they do two thousand bikes in Lister, when they're thinking nothing blocks off any of those roads, and there's, there's, I mean, two thousand bikes at a time, so I would think that's not going to be an issue. I don't think anybody's going to be foolish enough to run in front of a bike.
Yeah, to your point, Mike, too, I have to agree. There could be three, four thousand people down there. I think the businesses are going to actually benefit from it, from walk-in traffic as it goes on. And I commend you for doing, going the extra mile and getting, doing your homework. I support what you're saying. Councillor White?
Yes, I do appreciate that you followed council direction to go and personally speak with all members of our retail and commercial industries that would have been affected, either positively or negatively, there was still an effect to these businesses. And it is one thing that I have learned since sitting in this seat, is no matter how good your intention is, and no matter how good you think your idea is, there will be people that don't think it's a good idea. So I really have to thank you guys for going back and taking the time to talk to every business owner. I'm sure that consideration meant a lot to them. So thank you.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I didn't have a problem with this, I wasn't at the last council meeting when this was discussed, but I never had a problem with it, because part of being in businesses is getting community goodwill. And I certainly wouldn't want to own a, own a business that protested the Golden Helmets, putting on a show of thousands of people for Kirkland Lake residents. It's part of being part of the community. And I think some of the businesses, yeah, maybe one sector of their business goes down, but they're going to get walk-in traffic on the other sectors of their business, like the pop sales, the cigarette sales, the lottery sales, all that thing. Is it going to offset what they potentially could lose on the other portion of their business? I don't know. But I do know the goodwill they will gain by saying, yes, we backed this, we, we supported this, is going to bring them more business than they're going to lose. The other thing is, when I covered the Golden Helmets, that was on a July 1st, and it snowed, okay? I remember it very well. My hands were frozen. And the Golden Helmets would normally not have done their show under those weather conditions. But when they saw all the senior citizens, all the little kids, all the middle-aged people that showed up for the show, they put aside their normal safety standards and they put the show on. So I'm going to pray that it doesn't snow for this one, because I really, I won't be working it, and I really want to just sit there and enjoy it. So good luck.
Thank you.
I just want to pick up on councillor Owen's comment about safety. We met with Turtle Protective Services, the one that does the bylaw, and we've arranged for them to put on a community workshop for event security and safety, because the rules are changing and they're very familiar with it. It will be next Thursday at Heritage North at Seven. We'll extend the invitation to the 100th Anniversary, because we have to obviously make sure that the municipality is covered. But there's an opportunity there, too, just to speak to the fellow and get some feedback, too. He's been doing this for quite a while. It's a free resource to get the information. So just suggesting that. We'll extend the invitation out to you.
Sue Waller, you are here and with a number of the committee members. I'd like to commend you, the committee, for all the hard work. This has been going on for a few years. It's not easy being a volunteer, as we know. And the person we had assist- And, uh, uh, the person we had assisting, uh, with the accounting aspect of it, uh, happens to be my neighbor, so, uh, he came over this afternoon and went through the budget. I think Dennis has seen it as well. And Dennis can comment on that. Uh, you're in pretty darn good shape. So I think council doesn't have to worry. There's enough contingencies that are in that, uh, that budget that, uh, I think it's a no-fail situation. Hope that doesn't come back to.
No, I think what we did was, when, when I did come to the finance meeting, we took the comments into consideration and went back and, um, were more conservative in our approach of what our expectations should be. I'm hoping that we proved that wrong, that, that, you know, we have a better, uh, a bigger turnout than, than will be put in our budget. But, um, uh, we, we did make sure that we adjusted accordingly, uh, as per council's wishes. I, I think that the committee has worked really hard. We are over eighty events already. Our pamphlet should be going to press, uh, probably by Friday and, um, uh, like I say, it's not just our committee. Every school, church, service club, uh, everybody has jumped on board. Um, Encore Club, Legion, uh, White Eagle, like, everybody has just come to the table with their best foot forward. And for me, I think it's just, these two weeks are gonna be spectacular. I'm hoping the weather stands up to it. If not, I, I don't think it'll dampen the spirit. Uh, our committee has been working together since, uh, I think the first meeting, if I'm not mistaken, was in June twenty sixteen, when we'll first call the first meeting. And, uh, we have been together since then. Every committee member there, it's still the same people. And we just wanted to see this through to the end and make sure that everybody has a great time and, uh, and that we have council's backing. I think that's, that's the biggest issue, is just to make sure that you fully understand the work, uh, that we've put into this, to make sure that the centennial year is a year to remember. I, I keep wanting to emphasize that, that we wanna make sure that, you know, everybody goes home and says, that was a good, that was a good event. And, and that's what we're looking forward to.
I, I think it's safe to say, Sue, that that comfort zone is here now, if there was any doubt. And Dennis can comment on the, the mini audit or the budget, uh, that was done. And the contingencies and lowering revenues in some cases, uh, uh, I, I felt pretty good after seeing that. Dennis? Put you on the spot, but.
No, I, I'm, I'm by no means an accountant or anything, but just for what I went through with Sue and, what was his name?
Barry.
And Barry yesterday there, I think they're in fine shape and these people are doing a fantastic job. They, they all seem to gel together as, as a team and, and I think they're gonna have a, pull off a great event. There's something for everybody at the event. And if there's not, you, you'll definitely find something to do. So I think we should all support them and get behind them and do what we can to, to help them out. That's about all I got to say.
And come to the events. Yeah. Yeah, we're getting there. Yeah.
You have council's support, I can assure you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a resolution that's moved by Councillor Rick Owens, seconded by Councillor Casey Owens. The council approves the section of Government Road from Al Wendy Avenue to the DVA entrance be closed off after the parade on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, between twelve and twelve-thirty PM for the OPP Golden Helmets. Eleven-thirty to twelve? No. Eleven-thirty to twelve noon for the OPP Golden Helmets Precision Motorcycle Event.
All in favor? Approved. Sue, there's one thing I forgot to mention. I think it's worthy of note. Uh, I had the opportunity of reviewing the first, uh, the print of the, uh, it's, it's not a newspaper, but a magazine. Blew me away. Excellent.
I apologize. I, I brought one to the mayor and I meant to bring the councillors, uh, their copy at the meeting tonight and I forgot them at headquarters. I will bring them to Joanne to hand out to you, but it's our centennial magazine. It's a hundred pages with, um, great stories from all our local, um...
Don't look at me.
You're in the book. But, I mean, it, the, the whole book, it just turned out perfect and, and, um, everyone that's registered to go to one of the meet and greets will get a free one in their welcome bag. But, uh, we also have, we also ordered extras, so we could sell them at headquarters. And, uh, like I said, the, the people that came forward and sponsored the magazine, we thank you absolutely. It's amazing what, what, uh, they were able to put together for us. Uh, we just supplied the stories and they did a great job. We are very happy with our book.
Well, I'm su- sure all the attendees will, uh, treasure that book for some time, 'cause I, I thought it was fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, I took a look at the book on Saturday and, uh, I was thoroughly impressed. Um, and I'm not saying that because the company that printed it is the company I used to work for.
You just happen to be in the.
Now, there's a couple pages in there that you can just skip over. There's an ugly guy on them, but other than that, I recommend that everybody go out and get one of these books. They are excellent. Excellent books, very high quality. I didn't check for spelling and coming from the former company I worked for, I'm, I'm not so sure, but no, well worth the, how much are the, two seventy?
Two dollars and fifty cents.
Two dollars and fifty cents and you're gonna get a hundred times more than that in value. I highly recommend it.
Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by Councillor Rick Owens, seconded by Councillor Casey Owens. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Planning Advisory Committee held February twenty-first, twenty nineteen. The Tech Pioneer Board of Management held February twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen. The Northern College Community Campus Committee held April third and May sixth, twenty nineteen. The Tech Centennial Public Library held April eighteenth, twenty nineteen. The one-hundredth Anniversary Committee Meeting held May sixteenth, twenty nineteen. The meeting to open sealed proposals for hired equipment pre-qualification held May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. The regular meeting of council held twenty-first, twenty nine, held May twenty-first, twenty nineteen. And the meeting to open sealed quotation for electrical panel at airport held May twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen.
Any questions? All in favor? Passed. Reports of municipal officers and communications, CAO.
I'd like to begin by, uh, asking Scott McDowell and Amberly Spillman to come forward to, uh, the table. On the agenda item, uh, it indicates the introduction of the interim HN manager. As you know, Mr. Enoy left, uh, the employment of the corporation in March. Uh, we held a competition and we were lucky enough to receive, uh, a certain application. Mr. McDowell is, uh, native of Timmins. Um, I don't hold that against them, because I'm from Timmins. He's a graduate of, uh, Business Program at Laurentian University. He has, uh, landed on his feet. He is under excellent tutelage right now with Amberly. Uh, Amberly will be moving for maternity leave and, um, Scott will be taking over that position. I think that, uh, he will do an excellent job in representing the corporation as well as Heritage North and, uh, hopefully promoting it within the community and integrating it with the community. At the same time, I'd like to take, uh, opportunity just to thank Pam McDonald-Walk for handling the process and, uh, taking us through the interview process. I offer you, Mr. McDowell, if you wish to give him, um, a welcome.
Quite the introduction. I, I, any, anything that I would say in a welcome, I, I think it's already been covered. Um, as mentioned, from, from Timmins, Ontario, Laurentian University, I, uh, I, I'm a big fan of the north. I, I like Kirkland Lake. Um, I'm enjoying my time thus far, a week and a half here at Heritage North. I wanna thank, uh, Amberly. She's doing a great job at getting me acquainted with the, uh, day-to-day and, uh, looking forward to, uh, the, the, the coming months.
Councillor Owen?
Okay, I can't resist. Since you're from Timmins, I have to set a few things straight, okay? We have the best swimming facility in all northeastern Ontario, if not one of the best in Ontario. We have a better sports complex than Timmins. We have Heritage North, which Timmins doesn't have. We have better snow removal. We have a, a, a world-class, uh, recreation facility over there on Tweed's Mirror. So just remember, we might be smaller, but we are better.
I warned you. I warned you.
And we had the hip.
I'm glad to see we don't have any height restrictions, because you've more than met them. Uh, welcome to Kirkland Lake. Thanks, Amberly, as well.
If we could, uh, to move on to the next item, uh, as we go through the capital process in the last, uh, council meeting, council did accept the capital budget that was put forward. It, uh, obviously is not passed until the budget process itself comes to a conclusion. However, as we noted in the past, uh, there will be items that do need to be addressed in a timely manner. And, uh, even though they are within the capital, we bring them forward to council for, uh, consideration and a request to move forward with them. In this consideration, we have three different items. The land acquisition, monitoring wells for the attenuation zone at the landfill. The, uh, monitoring is usually done in the spring and the fall, and we do want to keep a certain level of consistency. Part of the budget request was to buy equipment, uh, replacement equipment to do this job. We're, water levels are high still, but we don't want to miss that opportunity, so we're bringing it forward. Uh, the second one is the purchase and installation of garage lighting upgrades. This is a carryover from the twenty-eighteen budget. And, um, excuse me, we do, we would like to proceed with it. It is a, uh, an occupational hazard over there. It's pretty dark. Uh, the third item is the loader. We've had that discussion a number of times. Um, the price for the loader, uh, as presented at the last council meeting was four oh seven oh forty. Uh, the price now has come down to three thirty-eight, two sixty-five. I'd like to thank, uh, Sherry for pushing through and, um, taking a look to see what options are there for paying for this. This is based on a five-year term, I believe, bank loan. Uh, argument for the garage lighting, as I said, is for occupational safety. The loader, uh, the existing loader is deteriorating quickly, uh, requires over fifty thousand dollars in repairs. Will not unfortunately extend the life of that particular unit. Um, putting the money into repairs when you have another one on its way doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. Uh, they could rent one. It'd be over five thousand a week, uh, close to six thousand and, oh, sorry, a month, I think. But thereto, we want to minimize just shipping money out the door on a rental. Uh, if we could carry through with the purchase, I think it would be beneficial to the corporation. Uh, the two, they are an expensive request. Um, however, I think that the argument for each in its own validity has been made. Uh, it, I offer it to council and ask for your direction.
Wolf, could you just clarify, uh, you've got three thirty-eight, two sixty-five to three sixty-four, four seventy. I assume that's a five-year term, including interest? That, that's why that's thrown in there?
No, it's also if you have a ten-year term. If I, I can't see her, but she's back there. Um, so it's based, the, the number's based on the term itself.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, uh, the, uh, just for the recording purposes, it's the rates, uh, that Sherry received from the bank on both a five and a ten-year term.
Okay, so the actual cost is three thirty-eight for the machine, but care?
If you wish to extend the term, it'll be paid more.
Councillor Owens?
Um, did we investigate the possibility of leasing? Uh, we used to have a lease agreement in place where we got new vi- new replacement equipment every three years and it seemed to work well. Did we?
Yes, we investigated both purchase direct, uh, leasing and then loan. The loan is the preferred one. It's better rate.
Okay, so that's the best deal for the taxpayers, in your opinion? Okay, um, it, it doesn't make sense to throw another fifty thousand dollars into a machine that we're replacing, in my mind. That doesn't make any sense at all. Um, in terms of the, the monitoring of the wa- of the flow, outflow from the dump, uh, all environmental studies are done basically at the same time or in the same conditions every year, so you can see the impact under the same conditions. So, certainly in favor of that. And in terms of the lights, um, I don't want any town employee working in a situation where it potentially could lead to injury. Um, so I have no problems with these three requests, pushing them through ahead of passing the budget.
I'd, I'd like to clarify, well, two points. Uh, definitely with the lighting, we don't want to see it continued again. It should've been done in twenty eighteen. Let's get it done now. Uh, on the loader itself, um, I'm sorry, the landfill, uh, we will not be pers- pers- the, a- a- as it says in, under recommendations, the land acquisition and monitoring wells for the attenuation zone, we're looking for the, uh, monitoring of the wells right now. It's roughly about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we do not proceed with any purchasing of land or anything without consulting with council first anyway.
Yeah, no, that's all good. I mean, we, we need these things, whether it's for health and safety of the workers or for the good of the taxpayers. I mean, why throw fifty thousand dollars into a machine that we know we're replacing? That doesn't make sense.
Uh, Wolf, just, could you clarify what happened with the old loader? Uh, is this being traded in? Are we getting into the for- the scrap value?
Well, the, let's go over scrap value. The ant- the anticipated trade-in value was roughly around sixty-five thousand dollars. But, uh, as they've been running it now, the seals have been leaking in the transmission front and back and that has to be fixed. If you're going to fix that, that's the only way you're gonna get your trade-in value. So we adjusted and, uh, the price for is, yeah, it has been adjusted for that.
Thank you. Councillor Adams?
So are all these, uh, items being funded by the levy?
Uh, these items are.
Okay. Uh, so ten thousand, seven hundred and fifteen, um, in our new reserve that we established, it says for energy efficiencies. Would that not be able to come from there?
The, uh, reserve that we established were for operational efficiencies.
Is that not, uh, operational efficiency?
No, I would not say so, sir. That, uh, it's, it's not improving the efficiency of the operation. It's basically just letting it work at this point.
Would it be improving the efficiency of the workers by being able to see more, as it's been identified apparently through something? That they identified this as an issue and they'd be able to work more efficient with better lighting?
No, it was identified for health and safety.
Okay, so what was the foot candles readings and was it come through the health and safety minutes or?
No, it, uh, was identified, um, twenty-seventeen, I believe. And I think it was done by an inspection by the roads foreman. And he put forward, uh, a number of plans where he could, uh, save the corporation money by applying to, uh, uh, energy efficiency programming. And as that evolved, that's when it was discussed as, okay, it's beyond that.
Councillor Ivanoff?
Uh, the, uh, land acquisition, you're saying it's not gonna be the eighty-one thousand?
No, sir. I said that, uh, we would not proceed with any land acquisitions, regardless if you give us the money right now.
But we had, we had discussed, we had discussed doing the acquisition.
That's right, but we would bring that back for council.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing this is part of the capital budget, uh, I am in agreement with Councillor Adams. I do think it is part of the service, improving service. Uh, I know we haven't finalized the final numbers. We have what it's gonna cost for in capital budget, but how it's being funded. Uh, so I think that there's room for further discussion on that. At least I would like to see that. 'Cause that's, we're talking, uh, roughly a three-point-eight percent, uh, portion of the last year's, uh, tax levy, so, uh, I, I know we always allow, uh, for capital expenses in our, in our, uh, capital, uh, the budget, but, uh, I think it's still worthy of consideration, something to consider.
Uh, by all means, but I think that at some point we do need to establish what the criteria are, because you have, uh, i- it's not an infinite replenishing fund. Uh, we do, would like to have that, because we will be looking at other e- energy efficiencies as well. We are meeting tomorrow with, uh- We are meeting tomorrow with a consultant to determine other areas for our energy efficiency reporting requirements. And as we bring them forward, would like to have direction, clear direction on that. I'm not saying we don't.
Well, I think we need to see the, the total numbers that we need for efficiency improvements, and then whether it can be fair or not.
That's kind of where I'm coming from, yeah.
I, I understand.
I agree.
Okay. Okay.
So I have three resolutions that go with this, one for each of the items. So it's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves the requested $81,408 capital expense for the Kirkland Lake landfill prior to the passing of the 2019 budget, and that this amount be drawn from the tax levy.
Counselor Owen?
Okay. I'm a little confused at this point, because that $81,000 also included the, the land purchase, right? But aren't we just approving the equipment purchase at this point?
You could do that as well. What we were, what we were proposing is that instead of bringing it back twice, and then, you know, if there's a change in the numbers or anything, we're working within the same budget. That's why I was saying, we won't go ahead with any kind of land purchase or anything like that without bringing it to council. Right now, we just want to buy the equipment, but we're keeping it as one line item. We can split that up, obviously.
Oh, no, that's fine. I, I just wanted a clarification on that. Thank you.
So that's the first one.
All in favor? Passed.
Okay, the second one is moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves up to $364,470 as requested prior to the passing of the 2019 budget, and that this be drawn from the tax levy or long-term debt proceeds, depending on the term selected. And this is for the loader.
Can we not say funding to be determined? I know it sounds a little hot-wall, but...
I put an, an upper limit, which is what they had asked for, $300. So I, I, the council approves up to $364,000.
Okay, it's not necessarily from, but you said from a particular...
It'll be drawn from either the tax levy or from long-term debt proceeds, depending on the term selected.
Any comments from anybody else? Okay, read it, okay?
You want me to read it again?
Yeah, please.
Okay. So again, the council approves up to $364,470 as requested for the loader prior to the passing of the 2019 budget, and that this amount be drawn from the tax levy or long-term debt proceeds, depending on the term selected.
All in favor? Passed.
And the third one is moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves the requested $10,715 capital expense for Public Works Garage Lighting Upgrade prior to the passing of the 2019 budget, and that this amount be drawn from the tax levy.
All in favor? Opposed? As noted? The reason why I, Wolf, it wasn't quite explained that it could, could be from lending, which would change not having to generate 380-some thousand out of the tax levy. So there is some flexibility to reduce that effect on the, on the tax.
Yes, this is based on a bank, a bank loan.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. So I'm here to talk about the Ontario Nurses Association Memorandum of Settlement, and to ask you to ratify, ratify the menor, mela, menoran, I can't say it, Memorandum of Settlement today. So we met with ONA on May 16th, and we successfully negotiated a new two-year agreement, which includes the following monetary items. So year one is a 1.4% increase, year two is a 1.75% increase, and I just want to note that these mirror the Central Award, which is what we've always followed as far as the wages. Improvement in vision care from $350 per two years to $375 per two years. And shift differential, weekend and in-charge premium increases of .5 cents an hour. And I'm asking that council approve the resolution to ratify the negotiated settlement.
Those seems like, those increases seem like a reasonable negotiated percentage. That's from March 2018, so there's really only about a year left on it. We'll be back at the bargaining table again, but that's the way it works.
Yeah, it took a long time for the Central Award to come down. It was arbitrated, and it, it took months and months and months. So that delayed us from negotiating.
As you mentioned, this is comparable to other wage settlements in, in the, that sector?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Any other comments?
It's moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council approves the TPR Ontario Nurses Association contract ratification as negotiated.
All in favor? Sherri? Treasurer's report? Budget update? Or, sorry, 2018 results?
Okay, so I would have rather been able to present you with the draft financial statements, but unfortunately, there's a holdup with the KAL Solar. So until we get those statements, we can't finalize the Town of Kirkland Lakes. So I did verify, though, with the auditors, whether I could bring at least an update on the 2018 results for just the Town of Kirkland Lake. So the auditors were here in, in April, and they did their fieldwork at that time. They've come back and said that they have no adjustments for what they've seen to date. So basically, as I say, that's the Town of Kirkland Lake information. And just to be clear, the KAL Solar, what will happen is, there's an external auditor that we don't engage. They do solar audit. They will provide the statements to the Town of Kirkland Lake, which we then must provide to our auditors. They will look it over. Once they've said everything's okay, then we can bring a draft consolidated statement for council review and approval. But in the meantime, based on what we've seen to date, the Town of Kirkland Lake surplus for the year ended December 31st, 2018, is just over $400,000. And because of the resolution that council passes in December, it says that if there is a surplus, we put it into the reserve for working capital. So I have done that, that journal entry has been made. And so the reserve for working capital balance at December 31st, 2018, is just over $2 million. So, as I say, this was just more of an information, because I can't give you the, the consolidated financial statements yet. But something to keep in mind as part of the 2019 budget process is, you could use a portion of that surplus towards 2019 budget. I wouldn't necessarily recommend putting it all, because if you do that, if you were to put $400,000 into the 2019 to reduce the tax rates, when you went to 2020, you've just put yourself in that position of dropping. Yeah. So, you know, like, say, you might choose to use a portion of it. The other alternative, too, is, you have that, you could decide as part of, if we can ever get a reserve, a reserve fund policy in place, you may, may decide to allocate that amongst various reserves and/or reserve funds. So, in anticipation of future big, big purchases of equipment or things like that. So, like I say, just more of an information, because I can't bring you the 2018 statements yet.
Sherri, I must say, this is a very pleasant surprise. We've been sweating profusely, thinking we were going to have a deficit. I may be wrong, but in the past four or five years, I don't recall ever seeing a $436,000 surplus. So I, first of all, I want to commend you on behalf of council for straightening out the 2018 financial statements. I know when you came in, there was, it was a bit of a mess because of staffing changes and shortages. And you've certainly put in the hours, burning the midnight oil. So council appreciates you getting that back on track. I know we're talking 2018, people were kind of wondering why it took so long, but that's, that's the real reason, so thank you on behalf of council.
And like I say, that's a combined effort, because everybody had the same goal, we just wanted to finish 2018, so...
Yeah, Sherri does the work, and we leave her alone. That's a combined effort.
Oh, sorry, Counselor White?
That's okay. So since this report was drafted, did we get any better of a concrete timeline?
For the KAL Solar. Wolf emails this, this fellow.
This guy about every day. The problem is that KAL Solar is with the Cap Energy, and Cap Energy has multiple projects that they work with, and I think it's the same accountant at the firm that is doing all of them. And so they're trying to balance that. We've impressed upon them that they're not just holding up our financials, but we do need the 2018 statements for some of the funding applications. And that's what we're hammering them on, saying that, okay, you know, this is not, not a joke anymore. So we are working on that.
While we're on that subject, are they up and operating yet? That's...
They've been up and operating since March. It's been incremental, and they continue to work on the sites, but they are producing.
Okay. Because I, I didn't take all of it was either, so that's clarifies that. Thank you. Go ahead, Sherri.
Oh, that, that was it for that one, if...
Well, it was a good news report.
Okay, so the next one, it's also just an information one. It's to do with the gas tax. So each year, we do receive an allotment for gas tax. Our 2019 allotment will be like $484,000. Now, there is the potential, assuming that it's passed through the federal budget, they're actually proposing to have a top-up of a one-time gas tax payment. They're basing it on the 20, our 2018 allocation, which is actually good, because we actually got more money in 2018 than we did in 2019. So if that goes through, you would be looking at another $541,000 as the top-up, which would actually bring the, it, it, it's what they call an obligatory reserve fund. So for that gas tax reserve fund, it would be at about 1.1 million with all that money. Now, so far in the capital budget for 2019, we're proposing to use 100, almost $123,000 of it, which would still leave over $1 million. So like I say, it's basically just to give a little update as to what would be sitting in that little pot of money, assuming that that second payment, the top-up, comes through.
I must say, I'm starting to believe in Santa Claus. I never thought we'd be getting this top-up money. We may be paying for it next year, who knows? But we'll take it. Any comments? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I think we should take this with caution, though. Because it's subject to the, the budget, federal budget being passed. And I don't think we should go out and have a spending spree, just because potentially we could get more money. And even if we do get it, I think we should be very careful with how we spend it, so we don't take the town backwards and end up with no reserves again. I think we need to show caution. And you're right, we're getting this money for a reason, and it's usually because they're going to download things in the coming years, and we have to take, I, I believe we have to take that into consideration, too, when we, if we get it, how we spend it.
Agreed. Any other comments? You finished?
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for the good news, Sherri.
Okay.
We have a request from the, oh, go ahead, Joanne.
So this is a, a request that we, we get in every year. It's from Betty Smallwood of the Palliative Care Program here in Tomischeming. She also heads up the Tomischeming Elder Abuse Task Force. And every year, she sends a request asking that council please declare a day. This year, it's June 15th, 2019, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in, in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake. She'd also like to just bring attention to the, the annual Spring Fling that they have on June 5th. It's at the Royal Canadian Legion in Kirkland Lake. And this is an event for seniors, giving them all kinds of information. And I do believe that Counselor White is attending for, on behalf of council.
I think you said the 15th, or my year?
That is the...
It's the 5th.
That is, June 5th is, is the Spring Fling, but June 15th is World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. So I have a resolution that is moved by Counselor Rick Owens, seconded by Counselor Casey Owens. The council declares June 15th, 2019, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in and for the Town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Passed. Ash, oh, doesn't look like Ashley.
That's right.
Got me again, Rick.
Do I check the height requirements? The width?
Good afternoon, everybody. What we, what we have here is a, a report for council for your information on the results of the 2019 Spring Free Tipping Fee Event. The council had approved the, the spring event from May 12th to May 19th, including two Sundays, which were four hours apiece. Over the, during the event, we, we realized 2,908 cubic meters of waste that were disposed at the landfill site. As a result, we, we, we have a reduction of $19,992.50 in tipping fees revenue. And for the Sundays, we also have a reduction of $200 for the, for the additional staffing. We also realized a small revenue with waste electronic bin that was provided at the Physical Services Department. It generated 1.82 tons of waste electronics, which generated $336 in revenue. Any questions?
Counselor Ivanoff?
Rick, what a typical two-week period of tipping fees actually generate normally. I mean, I know you say, you know, that it costs $19,000, but I mean, you know, if you, in reality, if people had just left that stuff in their yards and done nothing with it, you would have actually got what, you know?
You know, half that, half that. So it's, it's hard to say it's a reduction in revenue, really, because like you said...
It's a cleanup of our town.
It's cleaning up the town. People took full advantage of it. You're looking at, you know, 14, 1,400 vehicles during the event.
Yeah, and, and some of that garbage would have been, I mean, would have been typical garbage that you would have had in your yard anyway, and you probably saved the waste people from picking that up. I mean, it's, you can't do the numbers based on, I just, when I see $19,000 in, in expense, it's not true expense, it's...
There was, there were some youth groups that came forward, and they were, you know, cleaning up around the community, our parks and streets and areas throughout the interior of the town, that asked for the, for the exemption as well. And, and it was, it was easily granted, considering what they were doing.
Thank you.
Counselor Owen?
Not that my house is messy, but I did end up going out there twice. And I have some concerns, because the second time I went out there was later on. And the space to, to take your truck down, in my case, it was very small. And I'm not the most adept driver when it comes to driving backwards. And to me, it was a bit of a safety concern. I think I, I, I didn't back down. But there was only room for two pickups at the bottom when I was there. It, to me, it's a health and safety concern, and, and I take advantage of the free tipping fees almost every year. So I think it's something that we need to, to take note of and... So I think it's something that we need to, to take, uh, note of and possibly address for the future. Because, you know, I see a high potential there for, for, uh, uh, an accident or a person getting hurt and liability. And I think, uh, when, when I was out there, I didn't, in, in past, uh, cleanups, when I was out there, I always saw someone working at the, other than the town employee at the, the, I always saw, saw someone working the dump. You know, they were, uh, compressing garbage or moving garbage or covering garbage. And, uh, on the two occasions that I was out there, I didn't see anybody working the dump. I didn't see any compression, compression going on. I just, I noticed a huge difference in where the garbage was from the first time to the second time. I'm concerned that, um, perhaps we're shortening the life of the dump as well because it didn't appear that this was being compressed. It didn't appear that the garbage was being covered as I understand is required, uh, under environmental laws. I don't know that for a fact, but, um, so, but the safety factor is, is the really big thing for me. I, I think we have to be on top of that the next time. I love the free tipping fees, being Scottish, I love it. But it was not the best entrance.
May I comment? Okay, so that's a ti- typical cell that's right directly behind the tipping fee shack. That's, uh, that was granted to us as a construction material, uh, bulky waste kind of cell by the MOE CP. That cell is coming to a conclusion. Uh, it's, it's, it's just about at the end of its life. We're gonna survey it to see if we can squeeze a little bit more out of it. After that's full, that's it, all the garbage goes into one cell after that. The contract is performance-based. They find when it's busy with people, it's easier to go in there after five o'clock and do compaction, sand cover, things like that. So you typically won't see them. On May 15th, I attended, uh, representatives, member, MWRC attended, as well as our environment compliance coordinator, attended an inspection at the landfill site from an inspector, a regional inspector from the MOE CP. And he was impressed with our landfill site as opposed to past inspections. It's a dump, you're gonna see garbage. Uh, it's not someplace you're gonna go and have a picnic with your family. You, you, there, there, you get scattered, especially after, after the winter months. You will see bags blowing around, you'll see, that's typical, any landfill. Uh, they are working on picking up some, to improve the aesthetics of landfill. But in the words of the MOE CP, it is a dump, you're gonna see that. I feel, and our environmental compliance coordinator feel that the, the present contractor is doing a very, very good job.
Rick, can you just make a comment on the turnaround space for the pickup trucks?
That's because the, the cell was coming to a completion. And there was just that little bit of area that needed to be done and then they diverted everything to the bottom.
Okay, so that's not the norm?
That's not the norm, not at all, no.
Well, my main concern is, is the health and safety thing for people like myself that are coming out there. I'm glad that you clarified the, the operation of the landfill site. Um, because I've had a number of residents asking me about it and blah, blah, blah. And it's time that it be brought out at a public meeting when the work's being done, how it's being done, and that it's meeting MOE requirements. And I'm glad you brought that up, so thank you very much, Rick.
And I go out, you know, I try to get out there at least once a week to do, uh, to do my inspection. Um, I note any deficiencies that I may have with the contractor and I work with the contractor to, to, to rectify those. I assist with, with cell placement and how they, you know, should go about doing things. Uh, every, every landfill is different. Our typically is a, what you call an engineered landfill. Uh, site capacity is, is, is doing really well. There, there were some cases where we had to make some adjustments, but, uh, they've been made and, and so far it's progressing routinely well. They also go out on Sundays as well. Uh, it's easier to get that kind of work done when you don't have people and vehicles. A daily cover, it's, uh, it's being done. There is a little deviation here and there depending on whether you can get access to the sand or not. But usually within two days, you're getting your cover out there. And that's satisfactory to the MOE.
Sorry, Rick, I, I, I'm just gonna ask you because I was, uh, approached this afternoon. How are the part-time workers, uh, the black bears, uh, you have an issue with them?
That's, that's something else we've got to take into consideration. They like to, you know, hide out under old equipment. I mean, I had one pop up five feet from me. You know, luckily he was friendly enough, uh.
Is it about same as other years or are they a little bit friendlier?
Yeah, uh, well, you know, depends on, on how she feels about her kids. But they, they do enjoy the culinary delights at the landfill site and, uh, that's, uh, that's typical.
I just think that it's worth also just warning people when they're coming through the gate that if they have been sighted and that, not to let the kids out and stuff like that.
The tenants are pretty good at that. Uh, we also have signage warning of wildlife in the vicinity of, of the landfill. Just to raise awareness, wildlife, uh, heavy machinery working, things like that, you know, to, to, to practice your diligence. Just don't fly in there and fly out and just be careful and cautious.
What would you change in terms of operations? What would you like to see changed or improved?
Gatehouse, um, a scale. Uh, the operations inside the landfill site? No, I, I, I don't foresee anything else that you could actually change in that, in that, in that respect of, I mean, uh, we're coming to where we have one cell to accept all waste. Um, so that, that's gonna fill up quicker than it has been in the past because we're balancing two cells. But, uh, the one cell will be easier manageable for, for the contractor or municipality, in terms of flow of garbage, compaction ratios, things, because you're not traveling all the time back and forth from one to another. But I don't see much that we can, we can do out there to change it to, for, for the better, other than scale house and, uh, things like that.
Councilor White?
Thank you. Um, so when you talk about cells, sorry, I haven't researched a lot. So you're talking about like the actual location, so that behind, that location behind the, the shack, that's a cell?
Yeah.
And so the other cell, so it's being filled up and it'll be covered?
It'll be clay capped and then there'll be hydro seed put on that and it's just gonna become a nice grassy field.
Okay, so then the next cell that we'd be left with is the one that's on the far end past like?
Absolutely.
The tires and stuff like that? So, and how long do the locations, do we have, like, with that back location left then?
Well, how it works is when you, when you're, when you're, when you have one cell and as you, as you landfill that, it compacts, it compacts, you're taken from a, a, a development cell. So what you're doing is you're developing a cell while you're filling a cell. So by the time it comes to the next cell, that's empty, uh, because you took all the sand and you used it for cover material and other things. And then the, the town does sand hauls and then, um, KAL Gold's come in a couple of times and taken some sand and things like that, so that helps. Uh, right now, in our operational plan, we have, I believe, 32 years left of, uh, landfilling in that present location, after which time, uh, we would, we'd have to source out a new location.
Uh, Rick, I don't want you to think we're loading up on you.
No, no, it's fine.
I did get a call yesterday, late la, uh, yesterday afternoon. And it's, was an employee of a contractor and they, uh, the concern they had was, uh, when they're backing up to unload their trailer, that the, I assume that areas has been covered over with loam from the past and we keep building it up, uh, that they were getting stuck. And the weight of the trailer, which I think had the equivalent of three, um, homes, uh, shingles, uh, for roof replacement, uh, the weight, uh, there, it was bogging down and bouncing the truck. And of course, he wanted to know if the town would be responsible for, uh, truck repairs if, if, uh, something happened. It's not the truck repairs I'm referring to, I'm just wondering if it's, or maybe because it's into the spring and or, or summer now, but, uh, the wet, the wet weather and, uh, but his complaint was he didn't feel there was enough loam being.
That, uh, that depends on, on a case by case. You, some days you'll, you'll, you'll have, you know, it's, it, it, it's, it's, it works out well. If you get a overloaded truck and things and then it depends on the drivers. I mean, drivers, you know, spin, spin their tires, bury their trucks to, to the axles and, and things like that. And it, it creates a soft condition. And it, it, it has to be steadily rectified, um, with loam. However, loam in itself takes time to compact. So they would need assistance to, to, you know, to get a tug or a pull. Now, that's, that's, that's up to the contractor's discretion if he's pulling out, uh, stuck vehicles. I mean, there's liabilities there, right? If, uh, so normally what, what they would do to accommodate is have the individual hook up their, to their vehicle on their own. And, uh, and then they would try and get that out with a, with a, with a loader. But it's still, it's still, it's still a gray area on who's, who's liable for damage at the, at the landfill site. I mean, it's a, it's a discretion. I mean, you gotta watch where you put your tires. It's sand, it's a sand escar, there's not much we can do. We can pack that with loam, sometimes they put too much. If you put too much, then it gets too soft. If you don't put enough, then you get flat tires. So I mean, it's, it's a, it's a delicate balancing act. Um, I'm finding, um, people are still adjusting to the new contractor, if you will. Uh, and I'm finding now that winter's over, uh, was a successful winter, that things are starting to happen again, if you will. But I feel they're do, they're doing a bang-up job out there. And if any, anybody has a concern, they're, they're more than welcome to give me a call. And then I'll, uh, I'll assist and I'll let the contractor know and assist the contractor on what they can do to, uh, to help mitigate that.
So is there minimum requirements at the MOE?
Absolutely, it's only six inches.
You're confident that's being met?
So it's more than six inches being met. They're, they're putting at least 12 because some, you know, you got nails and things in there. Uh, but the requirement is six inches of, of, of sand cover on your, on your landfill.
On the liability aspect, do you think it's worth putting a sign out that the town of Kirkland Lake isn't responsible for?
Sure, anything's worth that. You know, a sign is, is always, goes good. We, we could definitely do that. As, as good Samaritans, we, we do try to help people out as well.
I agree. You finished, uh? You're, you're released, you can get up from underneath, get up from underneath that bus, Rick. Property standards?
Yeah, this is just a follow-up to my last presentation at council with Vic regarding the property standards bylaw and the terms of reference. At this point, we're looking to pass the property standards bylaw and the terms of reference that were brought to council the last meeting. Uh, the property standards committee is very much based on the, uh, the legislation, so the legislative requirements of having one. Uh, the intent of that committee is, is strictly to either confirm the order, modify the order, rescind the order, or extend the time for an order. We did suggest, I believe at the last meeting, that we would hold, our first meeting with property standards committee would definitely be a little bit of a learning experience for all of our members to let them know what, what is their mandate, what is their responsibilities, what is property standards versus clean yards, and go through that same sort of presentation that we did at last meeting. Getting them familiar with the process and then proceeding from there. So at this point, I'm just curious on whether or not there's any additions, changes, suggested modifications to the terms of reference that's being presented.
Ashley from the, oh, go ahead, Councilor White.
Sorry, so this is just if there's an order placed, it would come before the committee. So this isn't, um, I requested how many complaints? So just for clarity, um, you will not be called to a committee meeting every single time there's a complaint. It's just when there's a written order, right?
That's correct, yeah. And it's only, actually, and it's not even if there's a written order, it's if somebody appeals that written order. Yeah.
So Ashley, as far as the public is concerned, we are looking for committee members?
We will be, yes.
Okay, so that'll be on the website?
Yeah, and we'll put it on the municipal update as well.
Okay.
And if we can't get the members, what'll happen is they'll divert back to council.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I have a resolution that's moved by Councilor Rick Owens, uh, seconded by Councilor Casey Owens. The council approves the property standards committee terms of reference as presented by the manager of planning and land development.
All in favor? Passed? Capital asset management policy?
Yes, so as you can imagine, as a planner, this one excites me beyond belief. I'm so pumped about getting into capital asset management. Sorry, I know I get weird about the strangest things, but this one here, yes, it's, I'm excited to see where this is going. Um, at this point, uh, what we're trying to do is pass a capital asset management policy that will set the framework and guidance in, um, creating and updating our existing capital asset management plan. So it's sort of, um, a four-phase process. Uh, this is phase one and it is, it is mandated for us to be, to have the policy in place before, I think it's July 1st or June 31st, one or the other, by the end of the month. Uh, at this point, there's no budgetary expenses associated with it, but it is anticipated that we will see budgetary expenses from now until, from, or 2020 till, till probably 2023 in order to implement those remaining phases. Uh, that's going to comprise of consultant fees, software. At this point, I can't recommend which way we're going. Uh, we are going to look at the best options that are available. Uh, we're going to look at opportunities for funding to reduce the taxpayer, uh, the burden on the taxpayers. And we're making sure that this system that we are implementing is going to integrate with our existing financial systems and fleet management software. So for those who aren't aware, um, about capital asset management, uh, most Canadian municipalities are struggling to maintain, uh, the existing infrastructure under current tax and rate levels. A lot of, uh, the infrastructures, um, I wouldn't say depleted, but it's, it's not as, everybody's looking to, I guess, replace the infrastructure that's in place. And we don't really have the funds to do it with a government that's continually, uh, delegating responsibilities to us or downloading those, um, responsibilities from the province and federal government. So asset management, essentially what it is, is a comprehensive asset lifecycle-based management system. And it's designed to help asset managers find ways to minimize, minimize capital cost expenditure expenditures and operating expenses and maximizing the useful life of an asset. My favorite example is, um, they use this one all the time, is you'll have like a, a chart and you'll have your, okay, you just put this much, um, this much money into a roads project and it starts to deplete, the, the infrastructure starts to deplete. It's catching it at that perfect opportunity, so you're gonna pump it back up and keep doing this and re, rehabilitating when you need to in order to continue that life asset for a longer period of time versus letting it deplete to the point where it's 20 years down the road and you're having to redo the whole thing. And it's a huge hit rather than having it be a little bit over a long period of time. So in 2012, 2014, the province and federal government made it mandatory for capital asset management plans to be implemented. And if you didn't have one, you couldn't get federal or provincial funding. We did hire infrastructure solutions at that point to adopt the capital asset management plan. And we have been working and actively managing those assets according to the plan. Uh, new infrastructure projects have been updated, so when we do new projects, they have been updated into that plan. Uh, and make sure that we're, we're staying up to, up to date with it. Recently, in 2015, the Infrastructure for Jobs Prosperity Act, uh, was created. And it was to establish mechanisms to encourage, uh, principled, evidence-based, and strategic long-term infrastructure planning that supports job creation, training opportunities, economic growth, and protection of the environment, and incorporate, incorporate design excellence into infrastructure planning. So in doing so, the act included authority from, um, the province to regulate municipal asset management planning. So as I mentioned before, there are three, um, three other phases addressed in the regulation. This policy, the development policy is phase one of the four phases. Uh, so by phase two, it's anticipated that we will have an asset management plan for the core assets, which includes water, sewer, and roads, uh, that discusses the current levels of services and the cost of maintaining those services. Uh, phase three was, is, uh, to incorporate buildings and vehicles. Uh, phase three was, is, uh, to incorporate buildings and vehicles into that asset management plan, then also discussing the current level of services and the cost of maintaining those services. So, looking specifically at the buildings and vehicles. And then phase four is adding the proposed level of services, lifecycle management, and financial strategy to it. So, I've gone and I've, I've done, um, I guess, one workshop with AM, AM Ontario, which is Asset Management Ontario. And I've developed this policy using frameworks from them as well as the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. I've also pulled from several other municipalities to try and come up with, uh, the best of the best in terms of capital asset management policy. And what I did notice when, when drafting this, and I did end up adding the, uh, the governance framework into a sort of a chart, um, trying, trying to highlight the best way to proceed with capital asset management planning and how to make it successful. So, the things that they talk about are the level of service strategy. So, what level of service do we want to provide? And making sure that's identified in our capital asset management plan and sticking to it. Uh, analyzing and managing your risks, so associated with the infrastructure and the level of service as well as outside factors such as climate change, flooding, fires, taking into account all of those things into that asset management plan. Lifecycle management, so rehabilitating to ensure the most long-term sustainable, or the long-term sustainability of the assets. That same thing I was talking about before where you're getting to a point where you're trying to fix it before it gets too far gone and you're, you'll enhance the, uh, the life, uh, the long-term or the lifecycle of that asset. Looking at optimal decision-making, so have the right people at the table making the recommend, uh, making the recommendations to council for implementation. Managing demand, planning how to get us from point A to B, and then public education, transparency. Governance strategy, so who's responsible for what, which is a big one. So, I actually did hi, highlight key roles for council, the senior management team, treasurer, uh, C A O, so that it's very clear on who's responsible for what. So, you can make sure that you're having those, uh, those checks and the, what do I say? The, I'm getting more, the monitoring. Data management, so making sure that we remain up to date. And, uh, the more info that's inputted, the better it is. So, ensuring the remaining up-to-date is going to be, uh, the biggest one. So, ensuring that all of that information is continually looked at and managed. And when repairs are done, new information's being put into that system. Another big one was the integration and how it, um, not only integrates with the software, but how departments are integrating as well and how it's integrating with all of the plans that we currently have in place. So, you know, just passing, potentially passing a community improvement plan, how that ties into this, how the official plan ties into this, the goals and objectives that have been put in there, the strategic plan from an economic development standpoint. It's the parks plan, making sure all of those, um, come together into this capital asset management plan. They're all working coherently, or, yeah, is the right word, coherently in, um, yeah, maintaining integration. So, um, the policy's there. I didn't want to bring it to council for passing at this point. I did want to give you guys a bit of time to review it, ask questions, or potentially make changes if there is anything that you'd, um, you see that, um, you may have questions about or you would require clarification. I'm open to suggestions.
Councillor Ivanoff.
Ashley, I was at a meeting, I'm gonna say it's ten or fifteen years ago, in Northern College where this was discussed and all these, uh, different communities were in, at the, at the meeting and everybody who was involved in that development, uh, sales of all the communities. And, I mean, this sounded like such a great idea, but the cost of doing it was so astronomical. To a place like Kirkland Lake where I'm sure you got sewers that are built in nineteen forty-two that are still operational, um, uh, water lines that, uh, that should have been changed twenty-five, fifty years ago that haven't been. And I, I just can't fathom your job as a planner to try and put that together and make some sense of it because it was, the, the plans are, I mean, if you start looking at everything we have in the ground and on the ground, we have such a huge amount of stuff that's antiquated, obsolete, that should have been changed so long ago that, uh, the cost would be phenomenal to, uh, to try and do that. I would think in the multi-millions of dollars.
It's seven million a year, I think, at this point.
Wow. So, okay. Good luck.
Thanks.
Councillor Adams?
Yep. I'm certainly in favor of the, uh, asset management plans. Good for councillors to, uh, lay out before us, uh, what's coming due to help, uh, budget accordingly and help plan for the future. Uh, I think even in our last one, we did identify the SCADA system for the waste water treatment plant. So, it's not even really a surprise, right? We identified, but yet we didn't do the proper steps to, uh, mitigate the six hundred thousand dollar cost. So, uh, as councillor Eugene would say, it's almost a full-time job of this.
I'm so excited.
You said so at the beginning. You said so. So, uh, yeah.
I'm an odd duck.
Ashley, um, at least the province now has given you a template of what you have to work with. When it first came out, there was nothing.
To a certain extent. So, the province has been very good. I mean, developing this policy, there was workshops after workshops that we could have attended to make sure that this was meeting and, and they gave us frameworks to what, what to implement, which was great. And the, the whole goal, uh, with AM Ontario is to continue to do that for phase two, phase three, phase four. So, we will get a lot of municipal, I guess, support to be able to go to workshops and, and determine exactly what they're looking for in order to make it successful. So, yeah.
From a staffing standpoint, uh, I don't know if this is going to require full F T E. It's, it's a bit concerning because, uh, not only doing the plan, but maintaining the plan and reporting, up, updating, uh, reports and whatnot. We certainly need to have something in place, uh, but it's going to put a lot of stress.
Yeah. I do believe that that's something that Strategy Corps will be looking at, right?
God, there's hope, so. Yeah, it's not going to be one, uh, settlement. It's going to be probably a series of contracted services that have a certain efficiency or, uh, specialization. Putting it all together afterwards is going to be the, uh, bigger challenge. When councillor, you had mentioned about, uh, I'm just going back to it. When you mentioned the lights for efficiency, to me, this is underpinning it. Like, this is huge. And, um, I think that it does have to be factored in how it gets done. Where does it sit afterwards so it's maintained? Uh, my own preference is that we have a development department that, uh, does that. But I think that the other part is when you look at phase two, phase three, phase four, that's really built on a municipality in ideal situation. We've already gone through this where, uh, councillor Owen has asked for, you know, what about your fleet? What about this? What about that? We don't have all those little pieces in place like a perfect municipality. And I think that we're going to be doing a lot more work, um, across all these phases upfront. It's going to be more challenging than for normal, normal municipality, uh, 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 other municipality. So, it's going to be mapping it out. How do you find the specializations to get it done more efficiently than trying to learn how to do it? And then how do you do the different parts that, uh, that have to be addressed now? Can't wait for different phases. And how do you, uh, find a home for it so that it doesn't fall into this kind of, uh, situation again? It will be a, a huge challenge for every municipality.
Councillor Owens? Owen, sorry.
That's all right. I get his mail too, so it's okay. Yeah, I mean, asset management plan sounds wonderful and, you know, sounds like common sense. But my big concern is are we gonna spend so much time and money on asset management that we're not actually managing the assets we have? In other words, it's all gonna be administration putting the plans together, doing this. You know, we don't have the staff. Now, you mentioned contracting out. That's probably, sounds like it's gonna have to be an option that we look at, because we don't have the money to continually add the staff. It's almost like one of these bureaucratic things that upper levels of government say it's wonderful. But ultimately, it adds more staff to your payroll and ends up costing the taxpayer more. So, we have to do it. I mean, that's, that's all there is to it. But, uh, I'm concerned that too much staff time will be spent doing that instead of looking after the day-to-day operations.
I think that the, uh, structural organization review is, it, it's, this is gonna have to tie into it to see what, uh, alternatives that there are available or what we should be looking at. Is that some?
Yeah, definitely. Um, we, we can't just be looking at where we're coming from, but also what we have to accomplish and where we have to go. So, that has to be part of it to tie in. Ashley had made a reference to it into the financial strategy. Again, like, they have that down in phase fi, uh, phase four. We need that a lot earlier and that's what Sherry has been working on and what we're working towards. But you look at some of the other aspects, there's other things that the province is, in its infinite wisdom, is bringing forward, uh, community safety. I mean, this is a huge project too that nobody can seem to really define for us, but it's our responsibility right now. So, how is that going to be accommodated within the, uh, structure as well? How do we do that with other municipalities perhaps? Uh, some of these things are going to be too big for one, one town. Is there a way that we could try to combine some efforts, certainly with the community safety, maybe? On asset management, I, I doubt it. But it could be that at least a scare, uh, uh, a shared skill set if we can develop, get, get it up to that point. That could be something that's helpful. I think that we have to look for the opportunities in this, not just the challenges. We're stuck with it, that's for sure.
I recall, uh, seeing something in Sudbury newspaper about a year ago. They had done an in-house asset management plan, uh, maybe not quite as inclusive as what we're looking at, but they determined that they needed eight hundred million dollars to bring their infrastructure up to date. So, uh, it's a pretty scary outlook. Might be a wake-up call to the province to stop cutting and downloading, uh, programs and costs to the municipality. But, uh, they've made it pretty clear, if you don't do the job, you're not gonna get the funding. So, we don't have much choice. You're going to bring this back then? Yes. Thank you. Uh, introduction, reading, and consideration of bylaws?
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero five four being a bylaw to prescribe standards for maintenance and occupancy of properties, are properties, repealing bylaw fourteen dash zero one nine. Be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. So, this is the property standards bylaw that Ashley brought last meeting.
All in favor? Passed?
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. The bylaw nineteen dash zero five five being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Canadian Museum of History for funding towards the Community Stories exhibit. Be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed? Uh, questions from councillor De Stapp?
I believe there's, uh, one question that came forward from councillor Perrier. And it's regarding the change of yield signs to stop signs in Swastika. Point be, oh, I'm sorry.
Point being that there's, uh, an increase in children and there's a number of people have raised this as a concern. Asking direction from council, do we explore it and come back with, uh, pricing options? Um, I think that it's probably the best way to go about it. And what, at least then we can tell you what's involved with that too for other circumstances.
Councillor Owens?
I think if we're gonna be going down this road, which I fully support, there's other spots in Kirkland Lake itself that we should be looking at. Like, I'm thinking Churchill Drive, there's a few yield signs. I'm questioning what was irrational behind going to yield instead of a stop sign. So, it's might, something we might want to.
I think that it's, uh, part of, part of that answer also has to address what a yield sign is intended to do and how it is intended to be used as opposed to what we think in our public imagination. So, I think that has to be brought forward. But councillor Adams, earlier in the year, had also identified some other areas that should be looked at in terms of, uh, safety and how we can monitor them. I think it's probably worthwhile, we have, from the road study, we have some information. But if we can bring them forward and, uh, at least establish what hat, the process for which, uh, by which we look at things and what we do, then we can start addressing some of those other ones then too. So, if we can get, sorry.
Councillor Perrier?
Okay. Part, part of my reason for asking for this, uh, these signs is right where the, these three street intersections meet, that's where one, is one of the main bus pickups for the kids, the school kids as well. And I, I can look out my window because it just happens to be right in front of my house. And I can see these, uh, guys, I mean, probably everybody does it. They slow down at the yield sign, which basically, but some of them don't even bother stopping or slowing down at all. But a, after reading what I put in and that, I think one of the, even a bigger concern I have about this is, is the speeding that's going up and down that street? It's, it's just incredible. I was fortunate enough, last week I was sitting in front of my daughter's house and, uh, one person sped by and about thirty seconds later, a cop come by. And I mentioned it to him and he even knew who the person was before I even. I told him it's a little black car around the corner. He went around the corner in Swastika, it's three little black cars sitting there. What's the chance to say? But anyway, he went around and he looked at it and he said, yeah, okay. And, uh, I think he went and at least talked to the person. But maybe the, maybe the, the answer is to, rather than changing those yield signs, just put a couple of stop streets on that. Because that's a pretty long street, Riverside Drive, you know? And, and, and what really bothers me is most of these people that speed are people with kids, you know? And it's, it's just the kids, they got elderly people out there. And you don't want Mrs. Mullins after you again. So, because she'll, you know, she, she walks all the time, Mrs. Mullins. She gets mad enough, we'll be in for her. And I don't blame her. It's, it's, you know, you wanna be safe walking your streets, right? Anyway, that, that was my main concern with, with this here.
I'm actually hearing two things. One is what's the process for changing and the other one is for that particular area. So, uh, council's direction and we can direct staff accordingly then? Do you want that explored or?
I think the other thing we could do, just before we get to that, uh, Dennis is the, uh, we're in the police services board, that we could bring that to the attention of the, uh, police department and to maybe step up patrols. Actually, I expect to be meeting with the new commanding officer next week. And I'll, uh, mention that. I, I may have, need to get some s- street information from you, but I'll follow it up. Councillor Owen?
Yeah, community safety's a big thing for me. And actually, when I moved up here in eighty-two, I'd never seen a town with so many yield signs and so few stop signs, like it was, it blew me away. Now, mind you, I moved from southern Ontario, so. But having said that, I was also approached by one of the cab companies, asking us to look into placing stop signs in some places where we have. They didn't mention specific, but they were also in favor of adding, uh, stop signs. And they're, they're on the road all the time. So, obviously, they've seen a problem with yield signs as opposed to stop signs. My recommendation, uh, would be that, uh, your worship and myself take this to the, uh, police board and, and get them to look at the stats. But the stats aren't always telling because, um, they don't tell you about the close calls because police don't get called to the close calls usually unless somebody complains. So, I mean, you can have a hundred close calls in a, in a month and it shows up as a zero stat in the police stats, but it is an added, uh, information. But I think we should look into the situation in Swastika first and then consider looking at, um, pretty much all the town where there's yield signs and, and consult with the O P P to find out if there are problem areas. Anything we can do to make the town safer is, is something we should look at.
Thank you.
It's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. The council directs staff to investigate and explain the process for changing yield signs to stop signs in Swastika and also other areas around town.
All in favor? Passed? Notice of motions? None declared? Confirmation bylaw?
Moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. That bylaw nineteen dash zero five six being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held June fourth, twenty nineteen, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed.
All in favor? Passed. Councillors' reports? Councillor Owen.
Yes, I attended the 100th anniversary committee's flea market and auto show on Saturday. I thought it was well organized, well set up, certainly very well attended, and everybody seemed to be having an enjoyable time, and it was a truly a family event, you know, from little kids to grandpas, including myself. Enjoy looking at cars especially, so it was a job well done by the committee, I'd just like to thank them.
Thank you. Councillor Perrier.
I attended the TMA meeting last Thursday in Arleton. They brought up a few different things, talked about controlling the water levels on the dams around the north, and talking about every committee, every community having to have their own health and safety department. One thing I found that they talked about was pretty interesting is they're going to lobby the ONR to try and put on, rather than full-size chains like the Northlander, again, these things called, if any old train people, Bud Cars. And it's basically a self-contained passenger, one compartment, like a bus, I guess, that goes on train tracks there. So that's one thing they're going to push for, but he says they don't seem too favorable towards it, but.
There's actually merit to that, Dennis, I think, because when we did have the full train service, it's nice to say we want it back, but nobody was using it, and that's the tough fight to get it back on track. So I think that is, that's worthwhile. Any other comments from councillors? Thank you. So I guess we'll go to adjournment.
It's moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council adjourns its regular meeting of council held June 4, 2019, to an in-camera meeting of council pursuant to section 239.2 of the municipal act to discuss the following items: one request to purchase land, one request to lease land, and four issues concerning identifiable persons.
All in favor? Passed. Thank you.